All right. Good evening, Hampstead. Today is August 23rd, 2022, and calling to order the first regular meeting of the 2022-2023 school year. Melissa, would you mind taking the roll call?
Yes. Carl Hubner?
Here.
Jay Gyard. David Smith?
Here.
Megan Malcolm?
Here.
Erin Pellegrini?
Here.
Thank you. And also seated at the board table is Superintendent of Schools Bob Thompson and CFO Jeff Dowd.
All right. Ask everybody if we can stand for the pledge. Do you want to lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag.
-of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Board members in your packet, you've got a set of meeting minutes, five sets, one from June 14th, regular meeting, two sets of non-public from June 14th, and then June 21st, regular meeting, and the non-public. I'd ask you to take a look over those and then looking for a motion to accept with discussions or without.
So I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes. Do I need to give you the dates, Melissa?
Yes. And before you go ahead with that motion, I'd just like to point out that you should probably treat it in two separate ones because Ms. Malcolm wasn't at one of these meetings.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the June 14th regular meeting minutes.
And there are two non-public meeting minutes that go along with June 14th.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes for session one from June 14th and session two also from June 14th.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion from the June 14th regular meeting minutes or the two sets of non-public meeting minutes? Seems like forever ago. Do you need to roll call on this?
Just do all in favor. We can do a hand vote.
Thank you. All approved. Please raise your hand.
Thank you. It was a long time ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Nice. Nice time off. All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the June 21st regular meeting and the non-public meeting minutes.
I would like to second that.
Any discussion? All approved. Raise your hand. And abstain?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And any public comments, Melissa?
No, there are none tonight.
All right. We're going to move right into current business. Pretty exciting here, that new school year where last year we had a lot of newness. And we're going to introduce our new HMS principal, Principal Milbury, to come up and talk about her entry plan. So welcome.
Thank you.
Good start. Give us one moment as we're putting something on the screen. And is this also being presented online for everybody who's calling into this? Do you know? It is? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your patience. First time figuring this all out. Go ahead. So I just want to say I'm thrilled to be here. You know, those beginning of the year jitters are, have come, but I'm also super excited as more staff have come in. It's been really great. I started with some great pictures. Those are all of last year. Thanks to Lynn Joseph. She, I don't know if you've ever seen her, but she often has a camera and takes tons of pictures. So really looking forward to some new memories this year, but those are all just little tidbits of all the awesome things that happened throughout the year last year. And if nothing else, my first impression of coming here is wow, what an amazing amount of school spirit, and it is contagious and so much fun. So I really can't wait to get into the work of this year and continue with some of these awesome events. Some of the things that I've been doing this summer, some people might be wondering, what do you do in the summer your first year? It's been busy. Lots of meetings with SAU staff and my assistant principal and office staff figuring things out. They've been amazingly helpful, along with teachers have come in slowly, in and out, popped in when they've come in. So that's been great to get to know teachers bit by bit. So I have said one of the hardest things about being in a new building is not knowing everybody. I'm used to knowing everyone's names and even all the students' names, so that's going to be a lot of work for me. But I think having teachers trickle in over the summer has been good, and I have a great handle on who's who, so that feels good. Meeting with the HCS administrative staff, they've been great. Thank you, Dr. Cheney. As well as facilities and technology, both departments have really done a great job of kind of getting me up to speed of what I need to know, and they've been super supportive. So that's been great. We've done some PD planning. We had a two-day leadership retreat that was great with the H-Team. We had a summer learning academy that I know you've all heard about and you'll hear more about, but it was a great chance to meet some staff and also some students. It was awesome to meet the students that were here, and they had an amazing experience. We've been working on some hiring. As you know, that's been both going well and a challenge. And some parents have come in, and I've had a few parent meetings, which has also been great. So it's been a busy summer, but it's gone really well so far. So I have three goals in my transition plan. The first is to develop and approve systems of support for staff and ensure success for all students. And I've listed, as you can see, some activities of how I'm going to achieve each goal. Providing opportunities for staff to meet me, as I said, one of the first things I did was send out correspondence to everybody and say, I'm in the office most of the summer. Feel free to drop in when you're here. So I'd like to sit down with each staff member and meet with you. I have kind of a set of a few questions, you know, what's going well, what's something you're really proud of, what's something you need from me, and just asking everybody those questions and having a chance to get to know them. That will continue once everybody's back, and I'll be making sure that I do that with all staff. We're working on a scheduling task force. Schedules are one of those things in a school that are often a challenge and are always in need of some tweaking. There's definitely part of our strategic plan, which I have to say, first of all, coming into a new district with a strategic plan that you all worked so hard on is amazing and really helpful in driving my work as a new administrator. And schedule is one of those things that's on that. So we'll be working on a task force this year to work on the schedule and see what we can do to make some improvements to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. And also collaborating with the Director of Student Services, Jessica Parsons, to provide training and resources and really working on building that strong multi-tiered systems of support. There's a system in place, but there's definitely a need and desire to work on that and to do some tweaking with that. So I'm really excited to do that work, too. Goal two is to develop and maintain positive relationships with all students and provide opportunities for student leadership and voice. One of the most important things that I feel my role as a leader is, is to bring out that voice for students and leadership and give them those opportunities. There are amazing leaders already in this building that I can see. So this is going to be a fun goal for me to work on and the activities that go along with that. I'd like to get in to all advisors, to extend an invitation to all advisors and get into each advisory, you know, those smaller groups of students where you can really see what they're doing. I did tweak that, I think, to say December 1st. I think November 1st might be lofty, I'll be perfectly honest, but I'll try my best. We have a lot of advisories, and part of that is because we make them smaller groups. So it's all hands on deck. And one of the things we're working on this year is really having a strong advisor advisory program for students where we're building in a lot of social emotional learning activities and really working with the kids to give them that place to thrive. So I, my goal is to get into every single one and spend the full advisory block with each of them. Work with students to develop student-led town halls. We have assemblies, school-wide assemblies that are called town halls, and we do them at, for the whole school, but also grade levels, and having an opportunity for students to be able to lead them throughout the year. And then also provide student, opportunities for student feedback. There's nothing more powerful than listening to students and what they think, what are their ideas, what do they want to see happen, what are they hearing from other students, and having a chance for different, a variety of students throughout the different, the, the other thing that I find amazing here is the amount of different clubs and activities that students are involved in, and just making sure that their student voice, well represented throughout the school, to meet with us in administration and hear some ideas that they have and things that they'd like to see happen. And then goal three is improving communication and transparency with the Hampstead community. Clearly, I don't need to tell you that this is a strong, tight community that's really proud and really involved, and I really look forward to being able to be a part of that and working with the community in the following ways. I will definitely be offering principal coffees throughout the year. I'm going to aim for at least quarterly, and when I say coffees, I'm going to try to do a variety of times because not everybody's available in the morning for coffee. So it might be a chance to come in before a school board meeting or, you know, before another event at night and just try to give opportunities for people to come in throughout different times of day that they might be available and being able to hear from the community members, things that they would like from me and ideas that they might have, and they might like to hear some ideas that I have. Working to enhance the school's websites and website and access to information. We do work hard to use social media, but there's always room for improvement, and people clearly do well when we communicate well and that relationship is strong when there's great communication. And I pride myself on being a good communicator, so looking forward to working on that. Sending out weekly communication, that's been my style, is I like to send out, and it's not like a full newsletter, but it's a blurb every week that has, you know, a calendar of upcoming events and maybe different messages from different departments, whatever is happening that parents want to know. I intend to send that out once a week. I usually will set a day, maybe it's Thursday. Every Thursday, you can expect my weekly communication by the end of the day. So I'll, my plan is to continue that. And also extending invitation to have conversations with other public organizations and public officials. There are a lot of organizations in town. You know, I've been hearing all about the different organizations, and so getting into them, asking to attend a meeting and getting to meet all of those players is going to be really important for me to understand the community and to be able to be a part of it and have that partnership with the community. So that's really exciting for me as well. And I'm just looking forward to an amazing year. Like I said, it's, it's kind of hard. I'm getting at the point where it's kind of, I get hard to hide the excitement, not that I need to hide it, but it's really, I feel like a kid going to their first day of school. So I'm, I'm super excited to be here and really looking forward to what I know is going to be an amazing year and hopefully a lot less stressors than people dealt with last year. For those people that might be at home that want to have a look at this closer, we will put it up on the websites. If people are asking about it or want to see, see it or have questions, there's certainly hope they will reach out to me as well. Anyone have questions?
Questions for anybody?
Great.
I would just say, you know, small town, so I've already heard from friends and community members, and they've already said really great things about you so far, and I mean more than one or two. So, you know, word travels fast. So appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you. That's great to hear. And, you know, obviously, conversely, when people have concerns, I really hope that they'll feel that they can reach out to me. I know that it's easy to reach out to people that they know or to reach out to you, but I, my door is open, my phone is there. I will get back to people in a timely manner, and whenever there's a concern, I definitely want to hear it because we want to, want to be able to work to, with people and make sure that students in particular are having the best experience they can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next, we're going to move over to Mr. Thompson and to hear about the classroom size waiver, policy IIB.
Okay. You'll find contained in your packet, policy IIB, which is the class size policy. For those at home, just a real quick run through. The Hampstead School Board has set a standard maximum number of students in each classroom. For preschool and kindergarten, classes are not to exceed 18 students. It's important to note that the state max is actually 25. Grades one and two, not to exceed 20 students. Again, the state max is 25. In grades three through five, not to exceed 23, state max is 30. And then in grades six through eight, not to exceed 25 students, and the state max is 30. So every year around this time, our principals are reviewing their class sizes and communicating with me. And every once in a while, we have a class that exceeds the board maximum, and we need to come here and ask the board for consideration to waive the policy, which would allow us to move beyond the maximum. I have two instances where this is the case this year. The first is grade two. Grade two, we are not to exceed 20 students. We are exactly at 20 students right now and anticipate that at some point throughout the year, we'll have additional students that will enroll. And so we'd like to ask for that waiver tonight. We also are asking for a waiver for grade five. This is actually a little bit of a contingency plan. We have a vacancy in grade five that we are working to fill, and you'll find that vacancy will be outlined in the personnel report this evening. If we are, so in fifth grade, we have five sections. We have math, science, social studies, reading, and writing. If for some reason we are not able to fill the writing vacancy, we would give some consideration to moving to four sections. That would increase our class sizes to about 27 students in each class. That is not ideal. That is far from ideal, but unfortunately, we may not have personnel to fill that, and we may have to go to four sections. So essentially, I'm asking for a waiver for grade two. It's not needed today, but will be in the future. And also for grade five, as a possible contingency plan, should we not be able to fill the vacant writing position. And I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have.
So the grade two, what are you looking to potentially have that up to, like to say, up to 25 or?
I would say that we could safely say even 23. I mean, that would assume that we would have 12 additional students enroll. That would be a lot, but at least we were playing it safe with that.
My opinion on it is, you know, I wouldn't want to raise it to 23 right away because I'd want to have it revisited here and talk more. Because to your point, that's 12 over four, you know, three for each class, over four classes. So, I mean, I'd like to either 21 or 22 in my opinion, just because, I mean, how, how often do we get, you know, that many students between two board, between a board meeting in two weeks?
Yeah.
If we need to, then emergency one, right? Because I think that this is something that should be on our schedule and, you know, in our face every time we have to lift it. So I would actually just like to go one above, in my opinion, but other board members.
There's, there's three second grade teachers?
There's four sections of second grade.
Okay. So we, yeah, we'd have to get more than four in two weeks.
Right. That's why I'm saying if we get more than four in two weeks, you know, I think that we have a big issue there. That's, but I think the likelihood of it happening is slim, but I'd like this to be addressed every time that we have to up it by one.
I would agree with that because we want to keep it as, there's a reason why it's, you know, trying to keep the class sizes smaller. So I would agree with that.
I mean, I'll make the motion to accept policy IIB classroom size waiver, 20 to 21 for second, for second grade.
I'll second that.
All right. All, all approved. Please raise your hand. All right. All right. Let's talk to fifth grade then.
And fifth grade, sorry, fifth grade, we would be looking- To increase to 28 students.
So where are we at right now? Let's just say we had a writing teacher. Where are we at right now for student size?
I'm going to defer to Mrs. Milbury, who has those, those numbers. Are we, can you answer, can you come up to the microphone, Darren?
While she's coming up, is, I know the answer's probably no. Is there any way to distribute those kids into specials to get them an extra class to?
With the, there's not with the current master schedule. Again, Mrs. Milbury will look at the master schedule this year through that task force, but right here, that would not be an option. And again, this is not a great plan. I will admit that, but we're not left with a lot of other great options. Sorry, Mrs. Milbury, what do we have for enrollment?
So right now, we have 106 fifth graders. So divided by five, we're at 22 and 23 in a class. If we go to four, we'd be at 26 and 27. I think it's three at 26, one at 27.
Okay.
He's asking for 28 because again, it's early. We could still get new seventh grade, fifth graders and need to go over 27. We would hope not.
Just for the parents and anybody watching at home for me, and I know that it's going to be coming up, but the reservation is recent. It's not something that we've been sitting on, correct?
No. It has not, it will be ratified by the board this evening.
Yeah.
So in fact, we should be having this conversation after the ratification, but-
Right.
Here we are.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What's everybody's thoughts on this one?
I would probably keep it to 27, since it seems like we're at 26 or 27 potentially, if that happens, and we can revisit it, just same as the other.
We could also approve it for the next month, two months, something like that, so that we can then come back and revisit it later to see if we can come up with a better plan. I don't-
I was leaning towards going with the 28, but I'm not, I don't have a very strong preference. I just think that provides the buffer in case there are, in case we don't have a fifth teacher and we have additional students come in.
I just want to go to the course that the students are not going to get right now is writing for a period of time. Is that?
No. So they will still have writing.
Okay.
The four core teachers will have an additional class of writing.
Okay.
The downside is, is that that writing instruction is not necessarily delivered by a writing teacher.
Right.
Also make the argument it is being taught by a core content area, which is also, that could be a benefit.
Right.
And I think, you know, to the point Megan is making, this is true with second grade as well. We do have families that will come in on the first day of school to register their children. And so we do see a little bit of an inflow between now and the, and the start of school. Once school starts, they, they're sort of, they trickle in.
So if I'm understanding, the course, the classes right now are 26 and 27, so probably like two core, two classes are 26, two are 27. So if we say we'll go to 27, that really only allows you two eighth graders.
That would be tight.
Right. So I'm in more favor of what Megan's, you know, in confirming the 28. That allows you up to six students between school board meetings.
Yeah, I agree that 28 is the right number. All right.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have to, we can work, figure something out, but.
I think this is one we'll want to be monitoring every board meeting and update where we're at. So you want to make a motion or?
I'd like to make a motion to increase the not to exceed students number for fifth grade to 28.
I'll second. I appreciate being responsive to this, knowing that it wasn't something planned. And just the, I would just ask that we do definitely get an update on this every board meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, it's our intention to hire for this position.
Right.
That is Plan A, which we're working through.
Yep.
What I have brought to the board is really, we have to have a contingency plan.
Okay. Thank you. And any other comments? All approved.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Next up is Dr. Cheney with the update on the kindergarten enrollment.
Hello. So this spring, we were talking about the kindergarten numbers. We had 94 students indicate that they were interested or begin our enrollment process before we left for summer in June. With 94 children and the number of classes that we had slated for this year with three full-day classes and two, a morning and an afternoon session, we would have been over policy. We would have started the year with 19 to 20 students in a class. As the summer has evolved, nine of those students have made other arrangements. They've opted for either a full day option because they got a half day option, so they've chosen a private kindergarten, or they've just made some other arrangements for education. So right now, I currently have 85 kindergartners. 53 are in full day and 32 in half day. I have 17 in the morning session and 15 in the afternoon. So we are under our policy of 18, but it is, still many families are very disappointed in not having the option to get full day. Of the 94 that originally registered, 75 of those families requested full day. And with three full day teachers, we only had enough spots, I didn't write down my math, but it's in the 50s, to honor those requests. And then the other families either requested half day AM or had no response. So many families have had a challenge this spring, summer, trying to find arrangements for, for education. So we've been able to make it work with our current teaching situation because as we discussed this spring, the reality is, is there's just not another physical space on the first floor to have added an additional full day classroom. So what questions do you have about kindergarten?
I have some math questions about this one.
Oh, let's see how I do. I'm a reading person.
All right. So if I'm using just round numbers, like you said, somewhere around this, not, I won't hold you exact.
Sure.
We had 94th beginning of the, in June that said they wanted kindergarten.
Yep.
After we found out, after they found out how many could go to full day, how many could do the half days, that number went from 94 to 85.
Correct.
So essentially nine, like you said, left. All right. So 75 wanted full day.
Yep.
So we gave full day to 53. So 22 students are not able to do it, which again, I'm going to money, means that we charge $5,000 for five, for full day K right now.
$4,500, yep.
$4,500.
Yep.
So just above $100,000 is what we're not bringing into the district because we can't make the room for them.
It's, it's-
Is that- Is that?
About that.
Something, all right. And that's not counting the, the other nine that left district that we can say, assume that's, let's say, a majority of them would have stayed if we offered them full day. And they most likely went somewhere because they got full-day K. somewhere else.
Correct.
So that hundred plus is more than a hundred, but it's at safely a hundred thousand that we could have brought.
Yeah. And we will need to just be mindful that I do anticipate those students will be returning to us. We do see some years when we have to have a lottery, many students choose a different placement and then return to us in first grade. So just as we're thinking through the numbers for next year, I have to keep that in mind.
What is the, usually the percent that kindergarten population goes up to first grade population?
So.
Totally off the map.
It's a good question. For our kindergartners that move forward as first graders.
Right.
Almost a hundred percent. We try to move as many kindergartners onto first grade as possible.
And then how many above, how many came into first grade or are planned to come into first grade that were not in kindergarten with us last year?
I don't have that exact number off the top of my head, but our first grade enrollment is at ninety-seven. So some quick math, we had four, I, I would say somewhere between five to ten students have joined our first grade that we did not have in kindergarten last year.
Okay, just out of curiosity, if we're going to do eighty-five, what's next year's anticipation now? Some, some plus, some minus, but.
I do expect us to be right around that ninety-four mark.
Okay. I'll steal that a little bit.
No.
Questions, Tom?
Questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ms. Mackey.
Hey, all. All right, so in your packet, you should have, I believe, a document that has a breakdown of summer projects, hopefully.
I do not see. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Dowd is passing out.
While he's passing out, I'm just going to maybe steal. I had not seen the entrance to middle school for tonight.
Okay.
Looks great.
Fantastic. Yeah, that's, welcome to our, our new groundskeeper has been absolutely doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
All right, so to start off, these are just the major projects that I was able to do during the summer itself. First one, you'll see the H M S roof section. I originally had budgeted fifty, just under fifty-five thousand. I took the lowest bidder. It was an aggressive bid. He even told me, I had to call him to make sure. He was a reputable contractor, used in the town quite often, so I gambled, did a great job. The other two bids were about in the same ballpark. The flooring replacement, that's probably the biggest discrepancy you'll see. I'd planned to do seven floors, four of which I did. I did them here at middle school. Central school, I was, I'm looking at doing some throughout the year. It's incredibly difficult to do projects over there during the summer with E S Y. and Summer Rec. In, in August, we also have the Learning Academy. So it's incredibly difficult for us to get in certain areas and get a lot done. We're fortunate up here that it stays pretty empty. So that number so far to this date, I'm going to try to squeeze in at least two more rooms. That's my hope. Next up, the polished concrete floor, that came in just under budget. The H M S paving, that's another large one. Last year's quote was very high. It worked out in our favor. I did go a little higher on the increase. It's a petroleum-based, you know, product, so that can fluctuate. It can get very expensive or drop very low. The contractor that came in, he's a local contractor and he did a phenomenal job, usually always does, and his pricing was fantastic. The retaining wall at central school, that more than doubled the budget due to increase in blocks. And they found a lot of damage when they started breaking the wall down. I actually thought it was going to cost a lot more than that when I first saw, but luckily, they started in the worst area and we, we kind of made out. Line striping roughly in the area, paint prices had gone up a bit. Ceiling tiles, we did a lot of that in-house. That saved us a lot of money. That number will go up. We're going to probably do some throughout the year, probably do some, you know, chip away over vacations. Replacement window sashes, those, that was just a little bit more. Obviously, building materials, they've gone up. Replacement folding chairs, I just ordered a handful less just to stay under budget. We were still able to get around two-hundred-and-fifty chairs. And dehumidifier replacement, that was above the, in the ballpark of what I budgeted. So, so far, you'll see the number for these projects in whole, around two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand versus what we've actually spent, one-hundred-and-sixty-one. We're doing really well, fortunately. I'm going to try to accomplish a little bit more and in facilities, we obviously have unforeseen issues. We had one come up, it was kind of towards the end of last year and I was hoping to squeeze it in this budget. The H C S doorbell intercom has been failing. They use it so much throughout the year. The current system there is more of a low-end, commercial, high-end residential system. I'm putting in a straight-up, top-of-the-line, commercial system. That way, it will last. As most of you know, we need that system. They, they rely on that heavily. They need to have that communication and that visual for them to enter the building. So that came in just under seventy-eight hundred dollars, so.
Questions for you? Just out of curiosity, is it past its life, like we can't wait to see what happens with the vote?
Correct. So I've, I've put some money into it on two occasions already.
Okay.
And it's, it's bad. I mean, it's, it's still working, but it's very, it's spotty. The secretaries have a trouble, you know, trouble hearing people. Sometimes it glitches a bit and I've had, worked on it twice. I even had the main doorbell camera replaced and it's still starting to go. So the wiring, I was told the wiring is very bad because it's tied into the, the door system itself. It's all just needs to be redone. And unfortunately, with that, with this entrance, if hopefully we do move forward and get a newer entrance, we probably won't need this system anyways because we'll be ground level with it.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
Unfortunately, they do rely on it, and that's the tough thing. That's why it was kind of a hard pill to swallow. And I'd gotten a few prices and the other ones were much higher, so.
And that's why I was curious, we could do a Band-Aid for, to get us thirty-six months.
So I did Band-Aid it twice so far and it's still tending, leading towards that end-of-life failure.
All right, I have a couple of other questions here.
Go for it.
I know that last year, actually, when we did the walkthroughs at H C S, it was a lot about the roof above the library. That's all been taken care of? Then that was done previous budget or is it?
Correct, that was done previous budget. What that was, we had, the roof drains up there were leveled with the roof.
Right.
A lot of times, they should be pitched down. So I did that out of last year's budget. I fixed three roof drains that were in that area and that's what caused that leaking. And it was, it was just at the entrance of the library.
Yep.
So it wasn't really in it, but it did affect her first bookshelves and circulation desk.
Okay. Activities that you were planning on doing at H C S that you couldn't get done? You said you're going to try to do them throughout the year?
Yeah.
During like, when it breaks, that kind of stuff?
Yep, winter breaks, Feb. break, April break, I'm going to try to get as much. I mean, I usually take advantage of it anyways, but I'm going to do, I'm going to try stepping it up a little bit and get, you know, a couple bigger jobs in there. You know, a couple flooring jobs, two floors that I really wanted to get done. I just, E C, E S Y. was using that room as well as, I believe, Summer Learning Academy. So I just couldn't get in that room at all this year.
Is that something that we just need to coordinate, like next summer? Like moving kids from H C S. to H M S. so you can get some of those things done?
It's definitely a possibility. It's definitely a possibility, you know, or if I, like I said, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to utilize as much.
We're also anticipating a building project at H C S. next year, so we're going to have to move.
Yeah.
That's why.
Right. All right. So I mean, it's good news. I mean, you're, you're running about eighty thousand less than what you anticipated already. So appreciate that, kudos. And again, anybody that sees the entrance to middle school, maybe you did that for the new principal, a little, you know.
Of course.
A little something for, but it, it looks really great. It does, it just cleans it up.
Yeah.
Looks clean, so appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, this is great. You're lower on this and this was already lower than where you were when you presented it at the beginning, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I try to, I try to keep as much as I can in-house. That does save us, you know, for example, the ceiling tiles. I had them quote the fifth grade wing and I said, you know what? I think we could do it in-house. It took a little bit more, it took my, I borrowed my maintenance guy from central school to bring him up here to help my middle school guy. Might have taken about a week. But again, middle school guy will go down to help central school, you know, just, I try to share all my employees and, you know, utilize them the best we can. You know, like I said, it was very difficult to get in there to do much of anything during the summer. So I try to strategically, you know, get their schedules set and say, hey, you mind coming up here for a few days? You know, I had my, as you saw, the entrance way down there, a couple of my custodians had helped my groundskeeper. You know, I don't, I, I asked them, you know, they're, they're union contracted workers also. I don't ask them to ever do anything out of their realm unless they choose to, you know. And a lot of them like it, a lot of them will, one, one of my guys will offer. He's like, I'll help. And he just goes out and starts cutting trees, chipping, you name it, so. Yeah, we're very fortunate with the crew we have here.
That's awesome. Yeah, I just asked, there's a lot of stuff I'd ask that, you know, your newsletters, communicating out some of the successes, this is definitely one. Just, it's really good.
It's important to recognize the efforts of all of our maintenance and custodian workers. They're called upon to do more than what they've been asked to do in the past. And Jeff has not, Jeff Mackey has not really gone into the level of depth. The floors are being replaced. Our maintenance guys will go in and do all of the prep work.
Right.
So there's just a lot of, a lot of detail that they've been able to do this summer. Very gratefully, is very impressed.
And I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm, they, they, I couldn't, I can go all night saying how amazing they are, you know, as Mr. Dowd just said. I've had, my maintenance guys will have, you know, with a couple of custodians will come in and start ripping up an office. You know, if it's a small enough room, we'll carpet it. You know, I don't, they don't have to do that contractually. You know, they're, the custodians clean, the maintenance do maintenance. If my groundskeeper needs a hand, anyone jumps the, for the most part, anyone will jump the gun or, you know, and vice versa. The groundskeeper will come inside, you name it. So they, they have, they've, we're very, very lucky here to have who we have.
Agreed. Anyone else? All right, thanks for backing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is just some general discussion about the H C S addition plan design. If, just to bring everybody back to where we were a couple of months ago, we did move forward with planning, you know, it's on the website now, I believe, right? The plan that we've initially agreed to, which is the four classrooms off to the back. Have the office out front bumped out on the front entrance with the media center above, provides us a number of classrooms, et cetera. Over the summer, there was a number of activities. I'd like to actually turn it over to Mr. Thompson to speak to some of the activities we've done and kind of lay up where we're going to be going in the coming months and then have some general discussion with the board.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, the summer months, they've been busy. And so you may recall that in the spring, we formed the Hampstead Central School Building Addition Committee. So since the last board meeting, we've actually had two meetings of that group. On July one, we submitted our application for building aid. So as stated at a previous meeting, the state of New Hampshire has a process by which just single districts can apply for up to thirty percent of reimbursement for a building project. It's a pretty competitive process, but we were able to submit our letter of intent in December. And thanks to Mr. Dowd's efforts, we were able to submit the full application on July one. And I do want to thank him for doing that. It is a very lengthy, time-intensive process. So there's about, about a dozen other districts that have also submitted as well. It's a competitive process based upon a rubric. We also, since July one, we've also, we've contracted with the New Hampshire School Administrators Association to do a facility study. This facility study is for both the central school and the middle school. They will look at everything from our student enrollment to our instructional spaces, instructional programming. They will look at all of our systems that we have to ensure we are utilizing them to their, to the greatest extent. So that facility study is not specifically related to the central school addition, but it will yield some important data as we look to make decisions moving, moving forward. And we expect a final copy of that report sometime in late November. And they will actually come and present that to the board. Additionally, last week, we had a walkthrough with the Department of Education, Amy Clark and her team. She's, Amy Clark is the head of facilities for the Department of Education. They came through and met with members of my administrative team, along with David as the representative from the school board and our project manager and architect, where we sat down and explained the need for the addition. We talked about really the three goals of the project. Number one and most important on that list is students and staff safety. So we explained some of the deficiencies with the main office. We also explained that a second goal is meeting the needs of our diverse learners, particularly those in special education and the ability to improve specialized programming at the central school. And then the third was creating an adequate library media center space rather than just housing our library books in a classroom. So we explained those deficiencies to Amy. Then we took a tour of the building. We were able to, to point out the deficiencies and give her a vision of what the project will look like. Moving forward, we're working with our project manager and our architect to get firmer pricing as we, you know, begin to look at what the warrant will look like next year and also to finalize architectural rendering. So still more to come. Things are certainly busy and we're very excited to present to the voters in March a proposal that we believe is in the best interest of students, but also, you know, we're also going to be the stewards of the taxpayers and bring in something that's really efficient. I'm happy to entertain any questions or even turn over to Mr. Dowd if there's anything that you think I failed to, to mention.
Anything else, Mr. Dowd?
I think that's it.
So have we got commitment from the P M. yet as far as what is that next step of a, the renderings, the discussions and negotiations around like what kind of materials, like we've done in the past? They come through and say, here's areas of risk, opportunity, and we decide where to take those, you know, take those out or put those, keep them in?
We have a meeting coming up on Monday of this week upcoming. And I can share that with you, that just came out later this week, oh, sorry, later today. And we, I expect we'll be able to kick off that process then.
Okay. Because I, I believe, Mr. Thompson, we talked about having that building committee somehow part of that process.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Do we know when we're meeting next with the building committee?
No, we, we don't, but we can certainly get a meeting on the books and even have discussions about the inclusion of some of those members for the upcoming meeting that we have.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to recommend, and it's more to put in front of the board members, is, you know, in the past, we've done, I'd say, a pretty good job of getting communication out, starting in that November, December, January timeframe. But it's like an all-push effort and we do a mailing and then we say that's that. I would recommend that this year, we do a little bit differently. And while I'm not suggesting right now what that would be, I would like to ask the building committee's recommendation for any communications, what that would be. But also come back to the board at our next meeting with recommendations of where we may want to request some money, some funding for some communications in local papers or some sort of mailing to the community about what we intend to do to start to lay that foundation of spreading that knowledge, right? Takes twenty-one times to make it repeatable and, you know, make it sink in. So we've got plenty of time right now, if we use it wisely. But I think that if we wait until January, February to start doing mailings, we may lose some audience members with, you know, too much information all at once. So I would, you know, just put it on the radar that probably next board meeting will come with some suggestions of where to spend the money. Like getting some posters that can be put around all the schools for all the different, you know, functions that are going to happen between now and March. You know, we've got voting days, we've got sports coming up, we have a lot of things that we can, just a poster out there. I think we can do some mailings or put some stuff into the local papers of inserts. You know, make it official from the school board and from the district, general direction where we're going. Those are just some ideas, but some things that we want to decide on and think about funding this now, not just a big lump sum in February, March. So not sure if anybody has anything input to that opinion before we go in and talk about that.
I agree, the more information we can get out sooner, the better.
I think, I think you raise a very good point. I don't think we've had a very good presence of that project plan concept in this school as well. And half of our parents are here and it'd be nice to have that more prominent in this school as well as in the central school. So everyone knows what's going on. I like it.
We have some voting days coming up really soon. So just some stuff at the doors and, and say almost over-innate people with everything that, you know. If there's a door coming in, it's got something there, you know. But I think we got to just do a better job of messaging here in the district, in the school, but also in the community. And I'm not just saying just on social media. There's just a lot of other ways we got to. There's just a lot of other ways we gotta get out there in print, so.
I like it.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think there's any action on this one anywhere for, so we'll move right to the next, uh, for the HMS donation acceptance. Phil Millberry.
Thank you for having me up here again. We have a donation of $3,006.53 that came from the account that was, um, the Music Boosters. So that's a, an account that was closed and that would be used, it would be, go into our activities fund used for music. Um, so I would ask that the board accept the donation in accordance with policy KCD.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to accept the donation.
Second.
Second.
My other question is, so this goes to anything in music? It could be chorus, it could be instruments, it could be anything in the music department, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All approved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's more, it's more likely that that funding would go toward things that the boosters may have paid for and typically it wouldn't be things that we'd have in the budget, it might be additional things above and beyond that.
Right, right. But it could go for anything in the music department.
Exactly.
Music-related.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, over to Mr. Thompson about the 2022, 2023 daily sub-rate revision.
Yeah, so, uh, this time last year, uh, the board approved a $50 bonus, uh, for substitutes, whether that is a teacher sub, a parent sub, or a nurse sub. Uh, at the time, we were calling it the COVID bonus. Um, I'm, come back to the board, uh, this year, I'd like to extend that for, uh, for this upcoming school year. Um, I do feel as though, uh, having the $50 bonus in place, uh, we were able to attract additional substitutes because the pay was, uh, pretty competitive, uh, in comparison to other districts. So I think it would be a benefit, uh, for the board, uh, to give this some, uh, consideration. Um, and then, n- next year, you know, over the summer, I'd like to work with my administrative team to look at making a permanent, uh, rate that we would come back to the board for approval for, but at this time, I'm just seeking the $50 COVID bonus. So those of you who are curious, the regular substitute rate, uh, for teachers and parent professionals is $87.50. So if we added the daily bonus, uh, that brings it to 137.50. If you are a certified substitute teacher, holding a New Hampshire teaching credential, the sub-rate is $100, with the bonus, it's 150. And then for our substitute nurses, and they have to, uh, be a, uh, have a credential, the daily rate is $218.75. And again, with the COVID bonus, it would be $268.75. I'll entertain any questions that folks have.
My only question on this is, for a substitute, what is their normal day as far as, is it eight to four-ish, eight to three, what's the?
Yeah, the, the normal day, uh, follows the, um, regular, the schedule of whatever building that they're, that they're in. Is that a correct statement?
Yep. Okay.
And they know those assignments in our AESOP system before signing up for them?
Okay. Got it.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
It makes sense, especially in the market we're in, so, um, I'll make the motion to accept, uh, Ms. Thompson's, um, request to keep the $50, um, bonus for substitute teachers.
I'll second that.
For 22, 22, 23, sorry. Can I second it?
Yeah, no, I'll still second it.
All right. Any, uh, further discussion? All right, all approved? Thank you. Thank you for bringing that, Mr. Thompson. All right, uh, moving along, uh, turning it over to Mr. Dowd to talk about the encumbrance review and approval.
Excellent. So part of our year-end process is to, um, close out our encumbrances and the encumbrance, uh, the concept of an encumbrance is to simply reserve funds from our, uh, the budget year that we just closed, or fit the fiscal year that we just closed, uh, and roll that budget forward into the new year. So essentially it adds, it, it, it withholds from the previous year's funding and adds it to the current year's, um, budget. Doesn't impact, um, taxpayers to the degree that we want a new assessment in the new year, it's just less than we send back to them from the year we just closed.
Right.
So the, um, typically these are, um, these represent obligations that we have obligated ourselves to in a prior year, in the prior fiscal year, which we have not received services or not received full services for, uh, which we'd like to extend. Uh, I'd like to have the board go through these and approve. Currently, um, we have, uh, voter-voted encumbrance of, uh, effectively of 17, 340 for the lot line adjustment, and so this does not include that. That's already been voted by our, by our, by our voters. So this is just, um, those items that we, uh, would like to, 17, 738 was the lot line adjustment. These are just things that we'd like to, um, carry that budget forward until we're able to complete the service. Um, in here, within these is about a total of $50,000 for our design, um, on the 60s wing, which we had, uh, included, uh, as a commitment from last year. And, nothing else terribly spectacular, the only thing that I haven't included in here, um, of the total amount on that, uh, building study, NHSAA, what was that amount?
$9,500.
Yep. So the only thing that I haven't included in here is, is the, uh, 9,500 on the, um, on the NHSAA building utilization study. So I'm not sure if that's something that the board is interested in accruing for. You're at liberty to do so. That study, we did engage in discussions prior to the end of the year. Uh, I believe the board knew that that was going on. Uh, we just didn't get pricing from them or commitment to them to do that work until this year. So if we wanted to add that to the list of encumbrances, we certainly could, uh, to withhold from the previous year's budget. Up to the board.
My opinion is no, because, I mean, that just sets a standard that if we start talking to somebody before, then let's carry that money in. So, my, my opinion is no, but that's my thought on that, is make it clean.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't included it for that, for that reason, so.
I mean, that, up to others, that's my, my initial gut on that one is. I do have a question, so the, the, I'm gonna mess up the name probably, but Plautic and Sanderson Professional Associates, is that, which audit is that for?
Uh, previous year, and I believe the year before that, we still have to close that on 21.
So is this the audit against SAU 55?
No.
With Timberlane?
Nope.
This is SAU 55 Hampstead?
Hampstead only.
Only, okay.
Great.
And I guess, you could have a little bit of a different discussion, but where are we standing with that audit and is that close to being done?
21 is, uh, is very close. The, uh, they are currently, I think, occupied with their year, a lot of year-end work, um, but we don't have a lot left on that, and I think we can get that in, get them into 21 and 20, get them to do 21, and then they can start the work on the year we just closed. So, we do have to get those targeted up relatively, um, soon. So I think in the prior, in the prior year, we had the priority on the S, uh, winding up the SAU audit, to get that done, closed, get, get our funding over to us, long down.
I think it'd be good to get some information as far as how close are we to being done? Is this gonna be done in September? Is this, you know, cause it, this feels like audits continue to move, and I know we're at the mercy of them sometimes for scheduling.
Yeah.
And then when they have a question, back and forth, uh, but it'd be good to know where we are with our audits, uh, for the board, I believe. But, yeah, questions about what we're seeing? Thoughts on, um, board members of how much to encumber? Wyatt's next.
Yeah, I'm just reading.
Gonna get back into the, the grind of this.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand how much we need to encumber.
Part of 99,652.82.
What was on, what was he, he was mentioning was another, a plus of 9,500 for what we're doing with the building study.
So is that the, that's the number you want, you're suggesting to encumber? So that's the number I would go with. Um, okay, so I will make a motion to encumber 99,652.82. Do I have to add something to that?
For year ended June 30th, 2022.
Okay, for year end, uh, June 30th, 2022.
Go ahead and second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all approved?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. Okay. All right. Uh, next one, Mr. Dowd, 2022 year-end financials.
Yes. So this was the last piece that I, uh, needed in order to wrap up our, our year-end reporting, which is called the DOE 25, and you've been on the board, you've probably seen these, rather extensive document. Um, overall, our district position looks good. Um, I'm, we have a number of ways to looking at the way that we look at, at our surplus, which is the amount typically that we've, we've, um, budgeted, the amount we've raised, the amount we've spent, right? So, um, we're at about 2.3, and I'm just gonna put it like this, we're at about 2.3 going back to the taxpayers, I'd anticipate, barring any adjustments from the DRA. Included in that, I factored in the 99,000, so that, that's exclusive of that. Our capital reserve contribution, 500,000, exclusive of that, doesn't, that's the number after all of that. We have the lot line adjustment of 17, 738, which has also been excluded from that, and that was by the Warren article. And then we have the board approved encumbrances. So I think we're in, really in very good shape. Um, it was a very tight year, we really benefited from a lot of, uh, ability to tap into some additional grants that had been put through, and we really were able to take advantage of a lot of those. So I think overall, we're in very good shape. Our food service fund typically runs at, uh, at par, runs level. We typically don't realize any surplus. The idea is not that you're realizing a surplus of profit on school lunch. This year, we really had a, a much higher participation rate, and we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollar, um, surplus in that fund alone, which is remarkable. I don't think that's ever happened before. So again, federal funding has helped out quite a bit. State funds have helped out quite a bit to make, um, our food service program this past year possible and, and profit, I won't say profitable, but to be able to operate not at a deficit. So overall, we're not in bad shape at all. And as soon as the DOE is complete, I will, um, have it out there for you to review and we'll swing by and sign whenever is good for you.
But so after everything you talked about that we're keeping, that we've encumbered, gone to, uh, capital reserve, how much are we anticipating going back to taxpayers now?
It's gonna be over 2 million, close, 22, 23, in that range.
Okay.
And, again, our total fund balance retained was about 574,000. You had voted 2.5% of the amount, of, basically the maximum, maximum's 574,179. So that's all in.
Great.
Yeah.
Good job. I, I mean, I give you guys a lot of credit for the work that you've done, finding these grants and using this money and making sure we're getting everything that we can possibly get.
So, good stuff.
Think you set the bar high for last year, for the grant, so expecting even more.
Yeah.
Go for like double that this year, so, but no, I appreciate the hard work on this. And I know, you know, definitely a lot of challenges this last year, like usual, but you know, there's always challenges, uh, but send back over 2 million dollars. You gotta know that, as a taxpayer, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So we'll see how that affects our taxes, but, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Every nickel of grant money that comes from the, the federal government or the state, uh, you know, Nicole and Jess and Jeff, they find a way to spend it. And they also, they also are able to find grants just magically, so, very appreciative of the team that we have.
I think it brings us into a good time for this year with budgeting, you know, keeping with that, so, I mean, building off of, uh, some momentum from last year, so, it's definitely good. Thank you. All right.
And on that note, I didn't, um, update you, we did have an RFP open as well, speaking of budgeting, which I'll update you during the superintendent's, uh, section at the end.
Okay.
When you do the, the 25, it'll show what categories we were able to save money on?
No.
Okay.
That shows expenditures, not expenditures to budget.
Okay.
So, and I can, um, I'd put together like an object report, that would help you.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
I, I, I should be able to figure it out.
Yeah, one of our bigger areas was, um, outside tuition.
Okay.
We budgeted a lot, a lot more than we ended up spending. I think students are going to other schools and that's a one, that's a one for one.
The, the out-of-district placement?
Nope. The, um, our Pangerdin tuition.
Oh, okay.
Out-of-district, but not placements, that's just our regular jet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Dowd and Mr. Thompson on this? All right. Thank you again. When does it, just last question on that, when does it official, do we officially give the word to, um, the town?
So, I, the way that it works is I complete, um, the DOE 25 board reviews and sign that, that gets submitted to the Department of Revenue Administration. They go through and scrub it and, you know, gee, we like this here or that there, whatever it may be. Once that's finalized through the Department of, um, Revenue Administration, Department of Ed takes a look, they go back and forth, and then that gets communicated to the town as part of the rate setting. So, they'll officially know when, once it's approved by the DOE, DRA, what, what that number is. And really, it's the DOE that looks at it first, then the DRA, um, and then they'll use that. Um, that's why our town rate setting, tax rate setting, um, takes so long because we, we use the, the number, the, the surplus here that's returned to the taxpayers, and we also have updated numbers, usually for, for example, in our case, adequacy, catastrophic key, things like that, we can really tighten up and get those pretty close to where, um, where they should be so that we can, uh, really reduce the tax burden as much as possible.
That, you, I mean, timeline though, that usually happens in October, November, that we get that communication.
Yep.
So I don't know, Mr. Thompson, if it makes sense to, to, um, attend a board, a select board meeting in the coming month, just to, you know, you know, get in front and communicate this?
Absolutely.
But that's my suggestion is that, you know, I know that they typically come knocking and asking just to get as soon as possible.
Yeah.
But at least this gives us, hey, here's our official indications are this, and here's your timeline. So instead of them wondering and calling and texting me or whoever, just I think we should get in front of the select board meeting in the coming month.
Absolutely. Any opportunity we have to visit the select board, we, uh, we appreciate it, so.
And, um, to address, uh, Dr. Robner's question on, uh, where the funding comes from, uh, we were the beneficiaries of significantly, um, higher-than-budgeted revenue from, um, health trust distribution, SAU wind down, things like that.
Right.
So it comes from both sides, the expense side and the revenue side. And we've been very fortunate on the revenue side this year, I will say, so.
Yep. Lot of, lot of pluses this year, so hopefully, you know, next year, keep it, keep it going, keep that momentum there. All right. So any other discussion points? All right. We'll move on and, again, my glasses here. See, that was the year-end, so now talk union, uh, contract negotiations. So, quick update, so this year, um, our cycle is every three years, we are in cycle to negotiate the HASS contract and the HEA contract. Uh, we have, as a board, met a number of times to talk about different goals, different, uh, pieces of the contracts that we're looking at and, uh, thinking about, you know, what's best for the school district, the, the town, et cetera. Um, we have divided our team into two board members negotiating HEA, two board members negotiating HASS. Uh, we do, uh, begin those negotiations at the first week of September, or second week of September, the week of Labor Day, we can come back, uh, so that starts that negotiations. And just for those that, you know, have not been through this before, or just a refresher, we go through a number of rounds, uh, meeting with, uh, union representatives, uh, throughout the, you know, late summer and into the fall, um, and to then bring it to, uh, the community later on in the winter timeframe. I don't wanna give you any exact dates on this and exact times we're meeting, but know that we're doing. know that we're doing a number of negotiation rounds throughout, again, throughout late summer into the fall on the behalf of the taxpayers and and the school district, what's best for us. If anybody wants to add anything to that, I think it's pretty gentle for now, but.
It's good.
Looking forward to it and the outcome. So some healthy discussions coming up. All right, let's see. Moving on to where am I at here? Board goals, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three board goals. So board members in your packet, we have our, I think it's about eight goals that we've had that we created last year. What we typically do is, you know, let's say last year, we did, we started looking at this a little bit earlier last year, but this year, negotiations, that kind of stuff, we've kind of put this to, we'll start looking at it tonight. What I'd like to suggest is we follow kind of like the pattern in the past, which is tonight, we look them over, and then at the next board meeting, maybe we spend, you know, we do plan on having a non-meeting prior to a ninety minutes, maybe we do a half hour on board goals in that ninety minutes. And talk about if we want to change anything, modify. So I'd like to go over these tonight, just discuss what they've been for this past year. If we want to have discussions on them, fine, no worries on that. But I would ask that, you know, we we hold off really diving into do we want to change anything, add anything, remove for a non-meeting at the board next board. How's that sound?
Good.
Doctor. All right. All right, so I'm going to go through the board goals really quickly. I'm not going to read them all verbatim. They are available online. We've gone over them a number of times last year, and revisited throughout the year, but they are very important. First one, facility improvements, as we know, definitely high on our agenda every year of not only looking at the central school, but also working with Mr. Mackey about how can we fund and do things advantageously and cost effective. Appreciation of diversity and inclusivity, again, supporting the culture of acceptance, diversity, equality, and inclusivity by providing opportunities, professional development staff that foster a variety of perspectives to ensure our schools are welcome, welcoming, respectful, and a safe learning environment. Strategic plan, again, this is one that we did last year, checkbox on that, but I think this is going to be another, my opinion, good one to revisit, make sure we're moving towards where we want to be and revisiting if we have to modify. Budgeting, again, we've talked a bit about the budgeting and how it's very important to be fiscally responsible. Effective use of resources, again, this goes into how we're using federal, state, and local resources for the ongoing educational challenges. S A U fifty five support, again, last year was the first year with our S A U fifty five here in Hampstead with the the staff here. And that's why we added it then. Innovative practices, again, looking at how can we have innovative practices by staff, promote the social, emotional, and physical well being of students. And then one that we added, which I know is near and dear to some people's heart, is the outdoor community based learning, which has been very fruitful for us as we've discussed amongst ourselves many, many times. So I don't know if there's any anything anybody wants to highlight as a speaking point right now, but these are our board goals as of last year that we want to revisit and address if it's coming.
So I marked a couple of things that would change, but we'll review that.
Yeah, for me, the only the the only thing I can think of is trying to make sure that the school board goals and the strategic plan kind of mesh as closely as possible now that we have a really good strategic plan.
Agree. All right, so.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know we've, you know, talked before about, again, ninety minutes before we'll meet that non-meeting again, this will be part of that, so please think about, you know, flagging mark it up, Aaron, because there's definitely some people to hear that thought about as well. Still very relative, but there's a few things we can probably look at carving that carving out. All right, any other further discussion on the school board goals? Carl, any from you, first time through it, so?
No, I had read it.
Okay.
A year ago.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right, so now we're going to move on to summer hiring approval. So let me see, do I have this in here? Yes. You want to present anything from this?
Absolutely. All right, so policy, G C F designates one member of the board from June fifteenth through September first to be able to is designated to act on any personnel matters as presented during the summer months. And those recommendations will be ratified by a quorum of the full board at a subsequent meeting. This is that meeting. So first, I want to thank Dr. Hubner for taking the time to be able to review and act on our resignations and nominations. So what I'm going to read are just the nominations and resignations that Carl approved because I'm going to ask the board to ratify. So let's start with resignations. We had the resignation of Tracy Griffin Hagan as the Hampstead School District Director of Student Services. And for nomination, we have several names, I'm very excited to read this list. Jessica Parsons as the Hampstead School District Director of Student Services. Also, for our professional staff, we have Thomas Elmer, Hampstead Central School Special Ed Case Manager, Sophia Pullen, H C S elementary classroom teacher, Susan Giles, H M S School Nurse, Amanda Wellvers, H C S Elementary Teacher, and Whitney Moreno, H C S Special Education Teacher. So there's additional information in your packet. I'll entertain any questions that folks may have.
I think the only question I have about the list here, and I don't say this because Jessica's with us tonight, is, you know, in the past, when we've had a certain, it's a some sort of plan that they'd be presenting, do you have the schedule with that of when that will be happening?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, it was one of the the first things that Jess said is, when am I going to get to present the plan? And so we've gone to sort of order of hire, and we thought tonight it would be very appropriate for Mrs. Milbury to present first. At the next board meeting, we're going to present our action plan for the strategic plan. And then at a subsequent meeting, Mrs. Parsons will present her entry plan, which is really her vision, not just for her entry, but for student services in general. Had the opportunity to begin to collaborate on that plan, and I think you're going to be very impressed. I know you'll be very impressed.
And I'm assuming that's also with the study that we had on student services incorporating that.
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. No further questions for me?
Nope.
Nope.
Then looking for a motion to accept the resignation and nominations.
Can we change that?
Oh, sure.
So you could say just the motion is to ratify the actions taken by the designated Dr. Hubner over the summertime or?
I withdraw my motion and put a new motion.
Just a suggestion, that's all.
I enjoy the suggestion, and I will adhere to that suggestion. I my motion is to approve of the summer hiring approvals by Dr. Hubner to over the summer.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go. No, we both did it. She went first.
I'll second. Yeah.
I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Hubner for helping us over the summer with his new duty. Looking for all approved, raise a hand?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to board comments and correspondence, and I just want to let you know, first meeting back, not to hopefully jinx us, but ten minutes ahead of schedule. So, Mr. Dr. Hubner, board comments, correspondence.
I don't have any.
All right. Just over the summer, had a number of, you know, activities, but mostly around the Central School Edition Building Committee, which enjoyed and had some really good discussions and looking forward to continued discussions with our community members that are pretty diverse in their backgrounds and their thought process, and looking forward to the fall with them. So that's my comments and correspondence.
I don't have anything for tonight.
I don't have anything either.
All right. Fifteen minutes ahead of schedule. Mr. Thompson?
All right, let's dive into the current personnel report. For your consideration contained in your board packet, I have two professional resignations. The first is Brendan Hoare as the H M S E L A Writing Teacher, and the second is Shushmita Crowe, who is the H C S Computer Technology Teacher.
I'll motion to accept the two resignations.
I'll second that.
I would just say, I know that I'm going to have a heartbreaking heartbroken child with Mr. H resigning. When she hears that, I'm probably going to have to get some tissues and play dad for a bit, which I'm happy to do. And just want to say also thank you to Ms. Crowe for an excellent time at Central School that we've heard from students and peers. So thank you to both very much. Looking all approved, raise your hand? Thank you.
Yeah, so we are excited and ready to start the two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three school year, and it there's probably a million people that I need to thank. I know I'm going to miss somebody, but first, you know, I need to commend Jeff and his custodial team. These both of these buildings look absolutely amazing, and I would encourage board members take a walk around, take a look. Not only is it clean and well maintained, number of summer projects that came in under budget, very impressive. I also want to thank both Mrs. Milbury and Dr. Chaney and their office staff. The supplies have been ordered, the schedules have been written. I think, you know, people often think of summer and schools, and they think that we're closed. No, for a segment of our population, it is the busiest time of the year. We're ready, and, you know, I give credit to our office staff, too, because here at the middle school and in student services, we are down administrative assistance. So if anyone is out there that is interested in a position, please let us know. You know, our we welcomed our new teachers today as part of our teacher orientation. It was a phenomenal day. Nicole arranged a trolley ride for us, so we get to tour all of the important Hampstead sites, including the house that exploded two doors down. And also, it was great because we got to go to Pinkerton Academy. Dr. Powers took time out of his schedule to give us a tour of the building. And, you know, how important that is, you know, for our new third grade teacher to be able to see this is what, you know, the future product looks like when we get your kids at Pinkerton Academy. So we we are ready, and I know the building principals are saying, no, we're not ready. There's still a lot more stuff that needs to be done before our staff show up on Thursday and our students show up on Tuesday, but there's a lot of work that's been done this summer. I'm very impressed with everything that's gone on. With that said, we still have vacancies. And if there are people that are listening and you have an interest in working with children, you want to try something different, whether it's substituting, whether it's an office administrative position, it is a long term subposition, para educator positions, we have positions for you available. And and I know that that makes people nervous when they say, well, school's starting next week. I don't like to hear that there's positions that are still open. Let me assure you, we will be ready to go for day one, even if it means that this team over here of these administrators, even if we're the ones rolling up our sleeves and working with children on the first day of school, we'll make sure we have every critical position that needs to be filled. Absolutely will be filled for day one. So just a couple of really quick items. I sent a communication to parents today, information about the new C D C guidelines. They are also on our website. So essentially, the C D C has created new guidelines for our COVID response. Essentially, they're scaling back many of the protocols that were in place. One major one is quarantine, so they've removed quarantine for exposure in the household. So last year, if you are a household contact of someone with COVID and you weren't vaccinated, you had to quarantine, that's no longer the case. Also, isolation is five days. If you test positive, you still do need to isolate for five days. And as long as you're not experiencing continued symptoms or fever, you can come back to school. And additionally, additionally, C D C has removed recommendations for cohort grouping for quarantine and tests to stay. So those guidelines have been sent to parents. We've met as an administrative team, we're meeting with the nurses later this week, and if parents have questions, they can always reach out to building principals, the nurse, myself, or find information on on our website. I also wanted to just make folks aware that unfortunately, we do not have free school lunches. You may recall that the last two years, the USDA and the Federal Department of Education have waived the fee for school lunches. Unfortunately, that's no longer the case. So we would ask that any parent who may possibly qualify for a free and reduced lunch, we've sent both principals have sent home a form electronically to please fill that out. The form is also available on the website, and we'll be sending the form home with students in the near future through through backpack mail. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dowd.
Mr. Thompson, can I just ask a question about the free?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Lunches?
Yes.
Just because I think some parents are going to come in, you know, some kids are going to come in on Tuesday, they didn't get the message, they didn't read the emails, that kind of stuff. Are we still going to help them by like letting them get some lunch, and there'll be a debit debit or like what's going to happen on Tuesday when we know there's going to be a percentage of students?
Yes.
Will not think about, oh, I have my parents didn't put money in my account, they didn't open my account. We got a plan to take care of them?
We will take care of every kid, and that is true on the first day of school, the second day of school, and the hundred and eightieth day of school. Kids will will never go hungry, they'll always get a meal that they need.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, great question.
So, thank you. We very happy to report that we had our request or proposal, which we combined with the town for our fuel, oil, and liquid propane usage, and that came in last night. I don't think we're in a really great market, no matter which way you look at it, but it was an interesting exercise. The town and and the school district have very different uses, usage amounts, I guess. We get a lot of fuel at these two buildings, the town is a little bit more spread out and has a lot of different smaller buildings they receive fuel at. So the bids came in at three eighty seven nine for our heating oil, which is unfortunately about a seventy six percent increase over where we are now. I know, that's what I said, too. However, it is.
Seventy six percent or seventy six cents?
Seventy six percent. And I attribute that to a very, very favorable per gallon cost last year. We were able to get some great pricing before all of the increases started. I did factor in an increase, not seventy six percent, so we'll have to look at what the budgetary impact is on that. One thing that we had not gone to bid for before were was our propane, because we simply didn't really have enough to do that. We have propane at each school, different generators, and the kitchens both use propane. We don't use an awful lot of it, combined with the town, it made sense to do. And we actually got a better rate there at a dollar eighty four nine than we paid at all last year. So it'll result in some savings, not a huge amount, but some savings there. Enough, as I calculate, to cover the costs of feeding the S A U separate office. So nice pick up there. So it was an interesting exercise, a good exercise, and I look forward to hopefully being able to put our numbers out again next year and see if that volume helps us get some some deals. Three eighty seven is higher, by the way, than what we had last year, but it seems really significantly low below what market is now. I don't know if anyone's locked in residentially, but it seems much lower than what the market is right now. So I and and we may end up with the market lower than three eighty seven in the spring, but we're going to lock in the lowest rate we can now, and we did, and the town did as well. So we only had one bid. It's with our current vendor, Palmer, they do an excellent job.
I think it's just the appreciation that, you know, working with the town to see what we can do overall for the town, not to keep it separate. So that's definitely appreciated. So definitely that partnership is something we've been wanting, so it's good to see the fruition happen.
That's a good exercise, a little bit different from our normal process of bid opening, but I know the board has some flexibility there. For example, the select may have to open the bid at their meetings, and we just piggyback, just piggyback on that, and they were able to get it done. This was a bid that we had to have turnaround in twenty four hours. So it's good.
What about electricity? Are we going to look at that in the future for?
Yeah, we have. I have some bids out on that now that I'll be looking at in the next, during the next few days.
Is that with the town?
No, no, we're in different cycles there, but. But based on the way that, based on the way that electricity is now, we were in a long-term contract previously, and I'm not certain that the hiccup that we're experiencing right now in the market is gonna be continuing. And so I don't know that it's gonna make sense to get into a long-term contract again. And we might better be able to do a short-term contract or a shorter-term contract, and maybe align them.
Yeah, I'm still thinking, just questioning, you know, with the town also, because electricity's going up there, everybody just got their bills. That, you know, it's going up in August, so we're gonna feel it. How was that?
We have.
August.
August, it's going up now.
That's what I'm saying, it's going up now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in August, yeah. I'm thinking next year, no, now.
Right, right, so I'm just saying, like, if we can do the same thing, aggregate and look at when the town cycle, if we're not gonna lock into a long-term, can we lock in to be then on the same term as town? And then we can negotiate with the town?
Yeah, and so we're looking at probably a short-term, right, to be able to maybe better align. So, but I've spoken with the town already on that. So, and electricity is a little, a little, a little funny. It's not quite like a commodity that you can go out and just put on the bidders and, you know, 100 Chromebooks or I need 100 gallons of fuel. Depends on the usage, when you're using it, they really look at the rate class and all that, so it's a little bit more complicated. But again, it's something that we can consider and go forward. So, I mean, volume never seems to hurt.
And I'd like to turn over to Nicole, who's gonna talk about our Summer Learning Academy and a grant that she was able to secure.
Well, Nicole's getting set up, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that our free and reduced lunch eligibility and how many people actually enroll are very, very close, which means that's enabling these students who absolutely need the help, that they feel comfortable in the school. So, and definitely if anybody has questions about that, to reach out to you and to be able to do that, because that's really important.
I'm sorry, I don't know why this is so late tonight. It seems to be like not connecting. But I have great pictures I wanna show you.
I love the snow, so I'm looking forward to that.
I do love the snow.
26 days.
I'm more focused on this. I don't know why the click share is not.
This is what happens when you're talking about us being beaten up.
I'm wondering if this little device, I might need Michael to come and help smooth this device. But I could talk about the grant first. The, so earlier this school year, there was a program that came about called the Explore Act Tell Grant. This is an initiative by several local supermarkets, Albertson's and Shaw's. Shaw's is the one that really is local to us, to get students involved in project-based learning by exploring a topic in their community, telling others about it, and then acting on it. So here at the middle school, a group of students worked under the guidance of Julie Barbek to explore the idea of food insecurity in Hampstead, tell other people about it by making a small, little video PSA, public service announcement over at St. Anne's Food Pantry, and then submitting it and acting on their ideas by designing, using AutoCAD. They designed a mini food pantry. One of the things that they learned in exploring food insecurity is that sometimes the hours of the pantry aren't in alignment with people's work hours or their ability to drive by and get food. So we do actually have students transporting items to and from homes. But we wanted to come up with a way to do that that wasn't dependent on the main office schedule or the visibility. So they designed a little mini food pantry and built it in AutoCAD, and it's currently under construction. So along these lines, this whole Explore Act Tell project came to be, and it's called the Little Food Pantry. And we did not win the initial award, but they liked their idea so much, they created a secondary award for us. So they gave us a $500 grant. So that's from the foundation of impact of literacy and learning. So I can't thank Julie Barbek enough, she's done a tremendous job with our students to get that whole concept from vision to reality in place. And then, of course, Jeff Mackey and his team, I mean, they're just the stars of the summer, they really are. Julie doesn't know it's been built yet, so nobody at home tell her. But you'll see it in the parking lot, it'll be unveiled shortly. Okay, the slideshow. These are, I think it's the click share is not working. I might need Michael's help. And there's no way to project without it. I'm gonna take a quick second and just grab Michael, I need to get the other.
Take one minute away. Just buy yourself a couple seconds. Mr. Mackey. Jeff, Mr. Mackey. Their mics. I'll ask later. This mic wasn't turned up.
And now you have attention.
Mr. Mackey, then I'll repeat your answer so those who can hear it at home. Talking about the energy stuff that we were just talking about, has the town energy committee, many, committee met yet? So next Monday. Perfect. This coming Monday, the first Monday, okay, thank you. So on 29th, first time the energy committee is meeting, talk about any kind of improvements that could be in the goals. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so this is a very short presentation, just to show you some pictures and talk a little bit about our Summer Learning Academies. So this summer, we were, I'm very happy we were able to offer four unique offerings. Last summer, we kind of offered two. We offered a camp onsite at HCS for students in grades first through sixth. That was Camp Invention Modules and Games. And actually, we offered a morning and an afternoon session, so you could count that as two. We offered our seventh and eighth grade students a different program offsite, which was in partnership with Renaissance Kids, and that was held at the Field to Fork Farm. Then we also hosted a summer painting academy for students in fourth and fifth grade, and a summer music academy for students in fifth through eighth grade here with Mr. Robbins. So I just have some pictures to show. This is some of the Camp Invention Modules. We were able to purchase different modules that were age and developmentally appropriate. This one here is called OmniBot, the students are learning to program and more than program, really just physically build a remote control little bot. So they got to do some circuitry, they got to do a little bit of design, and then they could kind of decorate it. We also had one called Origami, I'm sorry, Robotic Aquatics, which is the picture on the left, and I have some more pictures of that. And then the, everyone did Marble Arcade, so all grade levels participated in Marble Arcade, which is cardboard and little marbles and all kinds of tubing and PVC. And you can see from these pictures, it's very materials-heavy. But the beautiful thing about this is that kids kind of combine their imagination and their engineering skills with some troubleshooting, and they get a lot of material to take home. So, this is a picture that was so endearing. The little guy on the left participated in the camp with us and then went home, and this little one on the right started building. So I thought that's really the goal, that's the goal. I can't wait to have all the little ones joining us in future summers, so I was very happy with it. This is a quick picture of Camp Invention Games. These are cooperative, play-based games that have a little bit of a skill and a lesson. So it's a little bit of a structured, I don't wanna say PE, but a cooperative play opportunity. Because sometimes the engineering design process, you know, cooperation is a skill that has to be taught, really. So, here is our morning crew. We were very full with 62 students and several staff members and a lot of paras and administrators onsite to help out. This is our afternoon crew, we had a little bit more room in the afternoon, but still had a really nice group. And then this is our sixth and seventh grade crew that went over to Field to Fork Farm, which is in Chester. And you can see on the right, that is Chris Rodriegs of Renaissance Kids and his co-instructor that he hired. The kids over at Field to Fork Farm did some pond scooping and sampling. And what was so cool is that it was such a low-tech homestead environment, the farm, but Chris brought in a digital microscope, a wireless Bluetooth probe, and an iPad, but then also the old-school analog microscope. So kids really got to see the two side by side, which I really feel strongly about both sets of skills. So here's the digital microscope, and they're taking images, and they're making up these composition notebooks with all of these elaborate drawings and labels. As a former science teacher, I just, this could not have played out better with the very authentic experience of scooping the pond water, looking at the microscope, drawing it. I mean, that is the process you wanna see. But more than that, what I think the takeaway is here is that, you know, we have students who might otherwise not connect at school, might not otherwise be friends, working in a very collaborative, close-knit way. So our strategic plan has that fifth priority about designing creative learning environments that match our philosophies. And this really played out incredibly in that way. We provided the environment that was a little bit outside the box with the guidance of qualified instructors, and I'm very happy with the results. And I think if we were to offer this again, had we offered this again two weeks later, it would have filled up, because I think word probably got out quickly that it went well. But we had a number of kids that already have said, I can't wait to do this next year. We've had several parents reach out saying, you know, I didn't expect my kid to have such a good time. And so I wanted to thank Field to Fork Farm. They are right past Hampstead Central School. If you just continue straight on, is that Emerson Road? Just continue straight, you go up into Chester, and they're up on the left. And they also were very generous and hosted our H team a few weeks later. Oh, and I'll get to that in a minute. So here are some pictures from our Summer Painting Academy. Mr. Terrelli offered fourth and fifth graders a morning or an afternoon opportunity to come in and paint scenes of Hampstead. So this is a process painting, and these are process pictures. You can see the children in doing the work. But the final works of art will have some on display at the SAU, and of course, most of them went home with their families. But this was another great little summer opportunity. This is our leadership team over at the Field to Fork Farm, where we got to meet some of the pigs, the donkeys, the chickens, the bees, the gardens, it was just extraordinary. One of the places that we'll be heading back to, to visit, is their, what is that thing called? The Mandala Walkway that they have? They have a meditative, a labyrinth, thank you. They have a, they have a meditative labyrinth that's cut into the lawn there that I think has some potential for work with students and with staff, for just wellness in general. So I'm very excited to partner with them and, you know, keep the learning going. But I think this is the first of many partnerships we'll be having to kind of expand our view of what a learning environment could look like.
Awesome.
Does anyone have questions?
No, that's awesome.
I'm waiting for Megan to say something.
Oh, no, well, my daughter actually went to the camp, not through the school, but for a couple days, a few weeks ago, and, oh, I was so excited. I was waiting all day for her to come home and tell me all about it. Yeah, she, it was engineering-based, and, yeah, I wasn't sure how she would like it. I figured she would be more drawn to the animals. But, yeah, she brought home all kinds of stuff and was teaching me about the weather and.
It's amazing because they do have a lot of animals on property. We did not wanna sell it as an animal opportunity because we didn't think that that really was gonna be the work even available to our students. But as the family got to meet the kids, and the kids got to meet the farm and learn some of the boundaries, the animals became more of a part of the week. So I was very grateful for that. But naturally, there's a lot of risk involved, and it went better, better than we could have ever hoped. So I was very happy about it.
My own idea is that, you know, we've talked about how do we progress this every year, right? We think about the first summer you're here and what we did. This summer looks like 10 times better, and, you know, two years ago was awesome. So how do we make this more structured, that it's something that we plan, you know, further into the, you know, into the spring or whatever, so that parents can start to plan a little bit differently? Because I know that's some of the feedback is like, well, I wish I would've known about it because I would've planned that week instead of sitting into a camp somewhere else.
Yes.
Because I think this is great for our, you know, community and our kids to take part in. So hopefully, we're thinking about that when we're about to be doing budget season, right? So just, things are definitely, looking forward to hearing more.
Yes, absolutely. I think future planning is always the goal, and it's the hardest thing to just keep it going and stay ahead of the school year. But absolutely, the more noticed families have, the better.
So, awesome, great, great to hear. And again, how do we celebrate this in the community, because there's a lot of community involved in it.
And I have to admit, when Nicole said, I said, okay, what's the plan for Summer Learning Academy? So we're going to the farm. I didn't doubt it, but it wasn't until I arrived and saw how engaged our kids were, how excited they were, the curiosity, the questions they were asking, it was just, it was absolutely amazing. It was so amazing of an experience with the students. We agreed as a leadership team, like, we wanna bring our entire leadership team there. Because this is the work that we're gonna do with our strategic plan and it's the work moving forward, so. All right, so finally, I'd like, I saved, you know, I don't wanna say the best for last, because that would not be fair. But I did wanna take the opportunity before we have Jess come up, just to say a few words. So Jess Parsons started as our Director of Student Services on July 1, really hit the ground running, has had an amazing summer, meeting with staff, doing outreach to families, reviewing our policies, procedures, our reports, to really, to make sure that she's positioned well when the school year starts to serve students. And it's been a real pleasure to be able to work with Jess. So I just wanted to introduce her, and then she's gonna talk a little bit about the ESY program. So Jess, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Bob, for that very warm welcome. I am very excited to be here and a part of the Hampstead School District. I am also very excited to, in a month or so, present to you the vision for student services and how we're gonna move our programming forward. But today, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about our Extended School Year program. And first, I just wanna give credit to Kara Gordon, who is the coordinator of this program and did all of the planning and supervision and everything to make that program happen. And it serviced 80 students over the summer. And in order to be eligible for that program, students on individual education plans are recommended through their IEP teams to participate in this program. And it can happen in a, in various ways. Some students can come for the full program, which is like 8:30 to 11:00 or 11:30. Others just come for tutoring, tutoring services. And so we serviced 80 students during July 5th through July 28th, and it was a Monday through Thursday. I had the wonderful opportunity to walk through and saw various things happening. Our preschool program had wonderful things going on. They had a whole dinosaur theme. I was able to dig through the sand and excavate bones with some of the kiddos. We had sixth graders learning about history through their reading program. And so it really was just a nice opportunity to get to know some of the staff and the students, as well as see some of the wonderful programming that we're providing for kids. Out of those 80 students that attended, we had 16 in the full program, 11 preschool kids, five kindergarten students, and then we had 64 kids participate in either related services, which is their OT, their speech, and other therapies, as well as academic tutoring. I think the nice piece at the end of this is that all parents receive an update and basically a summary of how their students did and what they did over that four-week period. And then all of those updates are provided to the case managers that will be working with those students in the fall. So it's a nice opportunity for those students to receive programming over the summer, and then will follow into the school year. Any questions about our Extended School Year program?
That sounds great.
And the other thing I wanted to note is, as Nicole was building programming over the summer for the Summer Learning Academy, she was very inclusive to ensure that our students with special needs were included in that programming. were included in that programming and had access to all of the Learning Academy programming. And my hope is that we're able to partner next year to provide additional opportunities for our students with disabilities to continue to participate in those extended learning opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Welcome to the district.
I have one thing I kind of totally forgot to mention earlier, so I apologize.
Well, that's good, because we're about to go into other business and old business.
Okay, good. I just have a request that we add onto the school calendar the days that are early release days that align with Pinkerton. Can we put the times for when they're going to be home or dismissed? Because people are not going to, they're going to get really confused, because it's going to change sometimes? Because you're going to have some early release days and then some that align with Pinkerton? So they're not used to getting out at like 1 o'clock. So I just wanted to see if we could put that on the calendar so they can just easily look and see what time they should expect their students.
Yeah, that's something we can start.
Okay. That's what I had.
Megan? Any other business, old business?
No.
Doctor? All right. The only thing I have is, it's kind of something I probably should start with, but, you know, I just want to congratulate the district on, you know, the first year under your, you know, leadership, Mr. Thompson. Really, you know, we have a lot of new staff, a lot of new administrators, and you've set the bar pretty high for this coming year. So hopefully, everybody's up for the challenge. We're looking forward to you championing a lot of new administration staff and directives that we're going through. And just appreciate, you know, embracing the goals and really moving forward. That was the only thing I want to bring up, so.
Thank you.
That was last year, let's get on a new year. And good luck to everybody in T-minus six days, 12 hours. And, oh no, 11 hours and 5 minutes. All right, thank you, and I think that's good to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.